Okay, folks, let's go ahead and call our meeting of, uh, May 23rd over. And stand, and before we get going, if we would, take a moment of silence, about a minute out for these folks in Boulder, uh, and their families, the victims who fell to that shooting incident that happened down there, and I think it's important to recognize that. So we'll take a moment of silence. A minute here, we will. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance. I, to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty for the last law. Okay, thanks. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Here. I believe trustee Kenny is also in the audience, but is not speaker at the moment.
Trustee Jerome. Trustee Kenny.
Present.
Kaye McDonald. Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Knutson. Mayor Hammond.
Here.
See who this is. Real quick. Okay, let's go ahead. Any amendments to the agenda tonight? That you need to know of? Okay, I don't, I'm unaware of any, so move on. Are there any conflicts of interest that we need to share? All right then. Okay, we're already in the item B, the public comment. We're gonna move to item B1, the public comment. We'll begin with individuals, um, attending virtually. If you are wishing to speak on items that are non-related, non-action items of this evening's agenda, you're gonna need to raise your hand, and, uh, once you're called upon, state your name and address for the record. Individuals will be limited to three minutes on the subject. And after we hear public comment, we'll, um, attend to the ones here in present. So let's go ahead and go with virtual.
We have Deirdre Sullivan. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, uh, just testing to make sure you can hear me. Great. I'm Deirdre Sullivan, and it's great to be here with you all. Um, I live at 2925 Rocky Mountain Court in Fort Collins. I'm not a Wellington resident, but have been a Larimer County resident for 27 years and have worn, um, a variety of hats in our county and community. Um, I have been the executive director at the family center, La Familia. Um, I'm a facilitator with the Family Leadership Training Institute through, uh, CSU Extension, and, um, have been really involved in some efforts across our community, um, with the integration of equity, diversity, and inclusion. Namely, um, I worked on Loveland's Comprehensive Plan back in 2015, worked with the city of Fort Collins, and I just want to, um, commend you all for the consideration in your comp plan, um, draft for identifying your important foreign-born workforce and immigrant community that makes up, um, a really important segment of Wellington. Um, we've learned about the importance of language and calling out specifically the desire to seek diverse engagement in Wellington processes and boards and commissions is really admirable and, um, a best practice as we're looking at um, comp plans and community engagement across the country. So, um, I had a chance to just look through, uh, the plan draft. I can't make your input session tomorrow, um, but I wanted to just say a few words, and, um, there's a lot of efforts happening across the county, uh, with Larimer County government, with, um, municipalities, Estes Park and others, um, and having Wellington as part of that is an exciting opportunity. Um, many of the families and staff at the family center, La Familia, live in the Wellington community and would bring, uh, bring their children, uh, to the early childhood program, and I just know what a sense of place, um, they see Wellington as and how having that included in your comp plan intentionally and thoughtfully is, um, just worth expressing gratitude. So, thank you all for your volunteer service and, um, your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
We have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the room. Is anyone in this room that would like to speak? Please, sir.
Hi, uh, I'm Steve Sarno. My address is two, uh, 459 East Kindred 66. Um, I currently have been a volunteer for the CAC for a number of years, lived in this area my whole life. Uh, but I'm actually more speaking tonight, uh, as a citizen of the United States. Uh, recently, um, there was a big Easter egg hunt planned for a week from Saturday, uh, for the kids and, uh, families of, uh, Wellington. And, uh, virtually at the last minute, the county said, nope, can't do it. You have 175 people, which really said, we can't, uh, have it. So.
It is on the agenda tonight, you know.
Pardon?
This is on the agenda tonight.
Okay, well, this is what I emailed Crystal. I was gonna talk about it, so.
Well, you wanna talk during that time?
Sure.
Why don't we do that?
Or you want me to do it now?
We get more than three minutes if you wait.
You can give you more than three minutes if you wait.
Oh.
Well, okay, that's right. Point of order. But, you know, keep going, Steve. Steve, you're going. Let's go.
Okay, last half my time. So, so what, uh, so I'm gonna talk.
Just here.
Okay, let's go. Okay. So anyway, the, the county, when their, their parents said that we can only have 175 people, which really made it impossible to do. Okay, we bought all the supplies. Um, I don't know where 100, you know, 175 came from. It's, uh, you know, couldn't do 180, couldn't do 200, but 175. But, you know, it's all about science and data, and we've heard that for almost a year. I've never seen any science and data. I've been begging for it for a year. Um, but, you know, I'm not here about that. I would love to, you know, I would debate the, the presence and quality of the science with anybody at any time. But what I'm really here to talk about is this. And this is the Constitution of the United States. When we wanted to move forward, the, nothing in this motion said people had to attend. You know, it's like, if you don't feel safe, don't go, but you shouldn't keep other people from outgoing. In this amendment one, that the Constitution and all elected officials swear to take an oath, uphold all the way up to president. You uphold this constitution. It says right of people to peaceful assembly. That's what we were gonna do. That's exactly what it was. We've had our rights taken away for almost a year. And, you know, I'll give the benefit to the doubt, a lot of doubt. Let's say there is really good science. Say the science is good. Nowhere in this constitution that you swear to uphold does it say these rights can be dismissed or taken away for any reason whatsoever. It's not gray. It's black and white. Unless others' constitutions, but it doesn't say our rights can be put on hold for any reason. Now, this was in public health, and we said we couldn't go, we couldn't go to church, we couldn't go to restaurants, couldn't go to graduation, couldn't go to, you know, sporting events, but we'd go by pot and liquor stores and go to big box stores. My point is it was very arbitrary in the lack of transparency. At every level was pretty scary. So, my, my point is, is, is this. When we have our rights taken away for the reasons that we are supposedly given, they could be taken away at any time. And it's, it's a, it's a concerning thing. And I'll, I'll leave you with this. I don't care what people's beliefs, political ideologies, or whatever, but when your government can tell you specifically who and how many people you can have in the privacy of your own home, which we were told at Thanksgiving and Christmas, we ought to all be damn worried, and I am. The last time that this happened, check your history books about 100 years ago in Europe. So I hope that people start waking up and demanding their constitutional rights back, and we do the right thing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room wanna speak on non-agenda item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, trustee Whitehouse, I just wanna make you aware that trustee Knutson has joined the meeting at some point.
Trustee who?
Knutson. Wyatt.
I see him. Thank you. All right, no one else wants to speak?
We have no other comments at this time.
We're gonna, did you wanna speak? Well, that's, it's on tonight's agenda. Okay, we're gonna, we'll get to that. This is non-agenda items. Okay, that's just a format, a form. Steve jumped the gun, but that was all right. He got there before we could shut it down. Anyway, okay, we're gonna move on then.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
We have a hand.
Oh, come on up, sir. Come on up, state your name, your address.
My name's Michael Clark, and I live over in Sage Meadows.
Right.
When I came in here, um, I heard someone, that woman was speaking, and she was very well-spoken, but, uh, she said a word, and, uh, I wanna have a word on that. The word was equity. And I think we've all heard equality for quite some time growing up. It's probably something that we learned in school, that through the civil rights movement and other points in time, that people have fought for equality. Uh, the example of equity that I've seen recently was when in the strategic plan, it talked about going after a specific group of people to get better participation, as in sitting in one of these seats here. And it really troubles me that maybe people don't know what the difference is between equity and equality. Equality is where we all start in the same place, and through our own efforts and our own hard work, we get to where we get to. So, uh, Mayor Hammond, you got to that place because of the hard work that you did. Ma'am, same with you. Whatever you all do is your careers. You got to those places because of the hard work you did. And I would never want somebody to seek me out because there was something having to do with the way that I was born and target me for a position because of something that I had nothing to do with. Equity is where you look at people and you determine that one is less than that one, is less than that one, and we're gonna try to advantage those people that we see as less. And I'm gonna be straight up with you. That's communism. That's Marx right there. And there is no place for equity in American government. There's plenty of room for equality for each person by their own merits to get to where they're gonna go. And, you know, I, I see sometimes there's people, something hard's been dealt to them in life, but you can't know one person from another just by looking at them. And so I'd like to see things like that stripped from any strategic plan because it has no place with us. And I have four daughters, you know, so I hear stuff all the time. Oh, the patriarchy and, you know, chauvinist, and, you know, all of this kind of stuff, and, um, the school just sent my daughter home with stuff telling her that, uh, women can't do the things that men can do, and she needs to be careful to fight for her rights and everything. Well, guess what? Before the school told her that, I never told her that. I told her, you go do what you wanna do. You go be who you wanna be in the world, and on her merits, I expect her to do that, all four of them. I expect everybody to do that. So.
Thank you, sir.
All I have to say.
Appreciate it very much. Anyone else? Okay. We're gonna move on. Tonight, we have a presentation, it looks like. This is Larimer County, Irene Josie.
Good evening. Thank you. There's a little bit of a volume difference, I think, for the folks that are live and the folks that are Zooming. First of all, I'd like to thank you tonight for welcoming me via Zoom. My bubble is very small, and we, in my office, there's 15 of us, and we come to work every day, so my exposure is limited, and I appreciate your consideration for allowing me to Zoom this evening. Um, firstly, I'd like to share that my name is Irene Josie. I've been the Larimer County Treasurer since 19, or excuse me, I started in 1986, but I've been, I've been the treasurer since, uh, 2015. Um, I started in the office at an entry-level position, and one of the things that I've learned most recently is that it's important to make sure that we continue our, our camaraderie, our connections, and our communication. And so I'm here tonight to, um, explain to, to you a little bit of who I am. My husband and I, um, live in the Windsor area, just, um, on the Larimer side. Uh, Wellington, he mentioned to me this evening that he remembers patrolling Wellington with the sheriff's office when it was a mile, uh, square. And so we have a long history in Larimer County, and I, um, do appreciate the growth of Wellington and the, and the wonderful management and the people that, that live and represent that community. With that, I'd like to share my screen tonight and, uh, go a little bit into what property taxes do and why it's important that we stay connected and, um, open the lines of communication. First of all, um, this time of year, I think, is important. Can you all see that okay?
Yes.
Make sure I got that right. This time of year, about January, the end, end of January, you receive your property tax statement if you're a property owner in Larimer County. We had 170,000 of those statements go out in January. And a lot of the property owners look at that and, and wonder, well, what happens to the money? You know, does Larimer County keep all of it? Where does it go? What does it do? Why am I paying so much? Well, I'm here to explain tonight that it, it does a lot for the community. As unpleasant as property taxes can be, I think it really is beneficial to our community. First of all, the assessor has appraisers in their office, and they place a value on the property. That value is then times by the taxing authorities within your taxing district. Wellington has its own tax district. Um, also, I wanted to share with you that the appraised value and the value that the assessor places on the property is not fair market value. That, of course, would be the value that somebody is willing to pay for your home. The value that they place on your property is for tax purposes. So when the mill levies are established by the town of Wellington, Pooter School District, the Wellington Fire District, et cetera, those mill levies are, are times by your assessed value, and that creates the property taxes that are due on the property. As you can see from the pie chart here, 52.6% of the money that you pay on your property goes back to the school districts and within the community. That includes the Parker III, Thompson, Pooter, all of the districts in Larimer County. The county keeps 23.7% of the property taxes that we collect, and that provides for the services in Larimer County, such as the sheriff's office, the jail, the DA, the coroner, the, the commissioner's office, road and bridge, health department, which has been extremely important over this last year. And here we show that 8.27% of the property taxes that we collect go back to the cities, including Wellington. And then another 16%, 15% goes to the special districts, and that includes the fire districts, metro districts, water districts, et cetera. So you can see that taxes don't always stay with the county. There's a big chunk of it that goes back into the community. And as an example, Wellington, uh, the town of Wellington receives $1.5 million from us, Pooter School District, right, at $219 million, and the Wellington Fire District is $2.6 million. This is, is an example of what your tax statement looks like when you receive it in January. On the left-hand side, you'll see the taxing authorities in Larimer County, including the Health, Health District, Pooter R1, the Wellington, uh, Fire District, Town of Wellington, Larimer County, et cetera. All of the mill levies in the next column are the, are the ones established by each individual taxing authority. Taxed by the assessed value gives you the tax that is levied on that particular property. A little bit lower down, lower down on the tax statement, it shows the owner and the site's address. On the right-hand column, you'll see the valuation of the property, and if you qualified for a senior exemption, it would show right underneath the valuation. And I can talk further on the senior exemption in Larimer County, which is a huge benefit for property owners 65 or older. Further down, it shows the levy tax, non-levy tax, and if you've made any payments on that property, that will show there. Whether or not you received that in the beginning of the year and have a prepayment, or you decide to go online and print it later, it will show any payments you've made. I wanted to point out on the bottom right-hand corner, there's a little green icon, and it's kind of hard to see, but that is the e-notice icon that encourages you to go online and sign up for e-notices. It's a huge benefit to not only the budget of Larimer County, but to the citizens of Larimer County, because we're saving on printing expenses, mailing expenses, paper expenses. And then also, if you think about the carbon footprint in our community, these are delivered to you online instead of in your postbox. So I encourage you to look at that when you receive it. If you didn't get a statement this year, please call our office. We answer our phone, 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. We'd be glad to email you an additional copy. This is something that we started. This is an example of a postcard. This will show you the information necessary to either look it up totally online, or if you're filling out your income tax return and you wanna know information about what you've paid in your property taxes or the value of your property. About one-third of Larimer County residents have mortgage companies that we partner with that will actually submit your payment to us. They, you escrow that in your mortgage payment, and they make that payment to us. There are a lot of folks that don't want that full legal-sized piece of paper with the return envelope and all of the paper that it provides. So we decided about three years ago to provide a postcard for the folks that have mortgage companies that are actually submitting the payment to hopefully cut down on the carbon footprint and the resources that we use. It doesn't include the payment coupons that are normally, um, included in the, in the full-length statement. This also has your e-notice icon in the upper right-hand corner, encouraging you to sign up for e-notices online again. This is a screenshot of our website, which is extremely robust, and I encourage you to go out and look around on that, and I love feedback because it's fairly new. And on our website, we can help you pay your property taxes online. We can talk to you about printing a receipt. If your house is like my household, at about 11 o'clock at night, we say, "So what did we pay for our property taxes last year? My husband's doing our income tax at 11 o'clock at night." So of course, my office isn't open, but I tell him, "Seriously, you of all people should know that you could get a receipt online. You can go and enter all that information, and you can help self-serve." And how handy is that? Because I know not everybody does their income tax return, nor do accountants from 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. You can also reprint your statement. For some reason, if you lost it or would like another copy of it, you can reprint it there. And also, there's a, a lot of information on the senior deferral, information on veterans exemptions, and, uh, mobile homes, personal property, all of the information that we handle and all of the kinds of property that we handle through our office, you can easily find on our website. As I mentioned, we partner with mortgage companies. We also partner with title companies and tax service companies. They have a third-party resource available to them on our website as well. Anytime property changes title within, um, within Larimer County or even the state of Colorado, for example, there are 64 counties that have to provide certificate of taxes due if either you refinance or you sell or buy some property. So all of that information flows through our office too. The public trustee is something that we took over on July 1st of 2020. It was an office that, it is an office that handles, um, not only foreclosures, but releases of deeds and cures. And I see John is, is nodding because his mother worked in the public trustee for many years, and she is sorely missed. Her wealth of information was amazing. And, um, and we, we miss her, but we're, we are actually handing all of the volume with releases of, of deeds right now. As you can imagine, there's a lot of people filing, um, uh, renewals for their mortgages with getting equity out of their home, their refinancing for whatever reason, um, because interest rates are so low. All of those releases of deeds flow through our office, and of course, foreclosures do as well. There's a moratorium on, on, um, government-backed, uh, mortgages right now, but there is not a moratorium on, on private-backed mortgages. So we're, we're dealing with those, and I think you've probably heard that the Foothills Mall in Centerra are going through a process that we're, we're involved in as an unbiased third party too. Um, we're kind of, um, tucked in a corner, and we, we do a lot for 15 people, and we see a lot in our office. So I wanted to share some of the things that we do. Not only do we do property tax collection, when we have those funds in our possession, we invest those funds. And until the 10th of the following month that they're collected, they're invested in public fund securities, and then we distribute those to all of the taxing authorities that I mentioned earlier. We handle special assessments, PIDs, LIDs, GIDs, personal property, which is income-producing property. If you own a business, the assessor would place a value on the income-producing properties. For instance, if a restaurant has a hood, a walk-in freezer, or something to that effect that, um, produces income, there is a value placed on that that's taxable as well. Mobile homes, um, destrains in moves, go through our office, bankruptcy tracking. If somebody or a business files for bankruptcy, we cease all collection at that time. Taxling, sales, redemptions, treasures, deeds. Anytime there is property that gets, at the end of the year, they haven't paid their property taxes, by law, we have to sell a lien on the property. But I'm really happy to, to say that our team is extremely conscientious to make sure that we do everything in our power to make sure that doesn't happen. All 64 counties participate in that by law to make sure that the taxing authorities can meet their budgets at the end of the year. Senior and veterans property tax deferrals, and we also are the bank for Larimer County. We have approximately 60 bank accounts slash checking accounts in Larimer County, one for almost every department. We make sure that the finance department takes care of what it's supposed to do, and we make sure that it says what it's supposed to do. So you have right-hand and left-hand involved in, in dual authentication, dual approval, dual making sure that we're doing everything by the books. Um, again, I wanted to mention the public trustee's office with the releases of deeds, foreclosures, and cures. That money flows through our office as well. You know, sometimes I, I think people are nervous about public funds, fraud. You hear, um, recently, about two years ago, that the town of Erie lost some funding to a bridge that they paid a contractor about a million dollars to that was fraudulent. So how do you make sure you avoid that in your county treasurer's office? Well, you make sure that somebody is at the helm that knows what they're doing. And one of the things that I would like to share with you is we do something, use something called positive pay. As I mentioned earlier, that the finance departments make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. And they send us a file every day with all of the checks that are written for our obligations in Larimer County, our financial obligations. You know, regardless of how many millions of dollars it is, we get that file every day. We upload that into our bank, and anything that hits the bank that isn't on the file from finance will get rejected, and we have the opportunity to look at those every day. So either reject them or accept them if they're not in the file. Uh, something else that we use daily is zero balance accounts. They're called ZBAs for short. Anything that's in those 60 accounts that I just told you about, at the end of the night, sweeps into our main account. So not only is it away from fraudulent, um, actors, as you might say, it is also earning money in a liquid investment every night. As low as the interest rates are right now, you know, they're, they're not great, but there's, the money is still working for you. So every day, that obligation comes in, in a file, and we upload. So every day, that obligation comes in, in a file, and we upload that into our main account. So every day, we're in and out of those accounts. I know I've mentioned before in some of my presentations, I'll log into my personal account on a weekend or an evening, and pretty soon I get a little notification that says, "You've been idle for more than three minutes, so we're going to log you out." And I joke that that doesn't happen at the office when we're in our accounts because we are in and out. We have four people in and out of those accounts every day. Dual authentication, dual approvals, everything has two people. It takes two people to move anything in Lerner County. The money is not only made available for external obligations, for example, any bills that we may have for services rendered, vendors, et cetera, et cetera. We make money available for all of our requirements for payroll, retirement, medical benefits, and everything else in Lerner County. So you can see, we're kind of a, I don't know, we're very busy for 16 people, 15, 16 people. We actually had an Easter Steels young man that I include in our 16 people. His name's Kelly, and he comes in on Mondays and Thursdays. So I include him in our 15 people. This is another example. I just want to do full circle for you folks. Property taxes, sales tax, specific ownership, which goes through motor vehicle, we handle that as well. Grant money, FEMA money, which is another hot topic right now with the Cameron Peak Fire. We are actually still paying funds out and waiting for reimbursement from FEMA for the flood. So we expect that Cameron Peak Fire will be another slow process. Everybody's getting a little bit better, and unfortunately, a little more practice on natural disasters in Lerner County. But the neatest thing about being able to know what you're doing in that office is I had the full expectation of what was going to happen. The first payroll, for example, with the sheriff's office working overtime at the Cameron Peak Fire, I almost knew exactly what that was going to be because of my experience there. So we need to make sure that that money's available, so our obligation's clear, and that we continue to keep a really good, positive financial rating. Just another example that I wanted to share with you with regard to some of the things that we've made available with availability and access to our office. Like I mentioned, I've been there since 1986, and over those years, I've seen a lot of growth and a lot of changes. I've been able to help Lerner County Treasurer's Office build three independent property tax collection systems. The last one that we built is in-house, and we've been able to bolt modules onto that, including special assessment modules, tax lien sale modules, bankruptcy modules. And we're working every day to make that system work even more robustly. We've earned Moody's AAA credit rating over the last couple of years. And there are only two counties in the state of Colorado that can actually boast about the Moody's AAA rating. And you might think, "Well, why is that important to Lerner County?" And just as an example, when we went out for the COPs, which are certificates of purchase for the jail expansion, we got the AAA credit rating, which then in turn gave us a lower interest rate on those COPs. Something of kind of interest in the vision and the forethought with regard to having accessibility. The day after Martin Luther King's birthday last year, Junior's birthday, we put out a Dropbox. We listened to people. They don't want to come in the building. They don't want to talk to anybody. They just want to drop it off, especially after 5 o'clock at night, right? So we installed a Dropbox. And the first day it went up was a Tuesday. We got a tax payment in it, and it was pretty cool. We were all excited. That's something that we actually did at a very low expense. You had a great return on investment. We were very excited. It was kind of like Ghostbusters, when she pushes the button and says, "We got one!" So we've been able to accept through COVID and through all of the pandemic, accept payments not only at our front door, but online, which is free, by the way, if you pay with an e-check. You can go in and use your routing number and your account number. And if you used a stamp, if you think about it, you wrote the check, put in the envelope, and mailed it, it would cost you at least 60 cents to do all that with a stamp. You can go and put in all of that information and pay your property taxes with no charge. There is a credit card and a debit card fee that we do pass on from the service provider on that, but in e-check, you can't beat that. Something else that's really exciting is that we partner with banks in Lerner County. If you live in Berthoud and you bank at one of the local banks, you can take your property tax statement and your check in there, and you can pay your taxes. You don't have to come to Fort Collins. There isn't any reason for that. So we've gone through a host of different things that we do in our office, and why it's important to have 15 people. When I started in 1986, we had 15 people, and we have 15 people today, plus Kelly. And we took over the public trustee's office. We brought investments in-house. We were saving over $100,000 a year. My chief deputy is Bridget Grimm, who was the deputy, or excuse me, the treasurer in Adams County. And I called her one day because her specialty is public funds investing. Her MBA specializes in that. And she said, "I would love to come up and work in Lerner County." So we're very blessed to have her here. And we've been able to save money using our partnership in public funds investing. We have online tax lien sale with the ranch being available for the firefighters and COVID, not only vaccines, but testing. We have our annual tax lien sale in November each year at the ranch. And 300 and some folks show up for that, and you can't hardly put them six feet apart and have a big gathering in November in the middle of a pandemic. So what do you do? You put it online. And with my amazing team, we were able to do that on the turn of a dime, and it was extremely successful. I'm very proud of the team that we have in the office. We answer the phone Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. If we're there, we not only have a chat program that you can chat with us when we're there. You can send an email. We have a public email that just is generic. You can send any questions. When you call, we pick up the phone. I think it's really important to know that we're available for you. And if you have a question, we'll answer it right there. You don't have to put your information aside and wait for a call back. We started a customer service survey the day after Thanksgiving this year. We have one particular gentleman at the front counter that I think we're all trying to beat on the positive responses because he gets fives almost every single day. And that really puts some pressure on the rest of us. But we do have an amazing team, and I wanted to share that information with you. Make sure that we continue to connect and that we continue to partner, be available for you. And with that, thank you for your time. I'm open for questions. I'm always available for questions. I'm going to leave my contact information on the next slide. So you can, even if you decide later that you have a question, you can reach out and ask.
Thank you, Mrs. Josie. Any quick questions for our county commissioner you'd like to bring up?
Did have a couple of questions. First off, thank you very much, Ms. Josie, for coming out here and speaking with us today and being here with us on Zoom. And really, it's great to hear the financial state that Lerner County is in right now. So I very much appreciate that, and I hope that we can continue that, having a good rating and just being wise in how we use our finances. It's beneficial that there's a lot of things we, as a town, have to work alongside the county with. So it's great to hear just the things that you've put in place. I think it's fantastic to hear how you've managed to not only take on more work, save the county money, and do more, but you've done all that with the same amount of people that you had 20-plus years ago, and that is phenomenal. So my thanks to you, just as a citizen of Lerner County and as an elected official that works alongside the county and the work that you've done. The one question I had is I know there was a change that was voted on by the voters that had to do with the assessed values. And I don't know if this is a really long in-depth, but what is the impact that that's going to have on the property taxes? I think that kicks in maybe next year. I'm not exactly sure. I don't know if you could speak to that briefly?
I think that's a very good question. With the Gallagher Amendment repeal, the assessed value is at 7.15 right now. And with Gallagher Amendment, it was 55% for commercial, 45% for residential, and that's statewide. And so that balance is no longer there with the Gallagher Amendment. What I would like to do is defer to our assessor for those answers. I think it's important for him to communicate how that affects his office. I'm kind of waiting to see where that lands. I think it's going to continue to increase that rate for a period of time. But with that being in the assessor's office, I'd like to be able to refer to him for those technical answers.
Thank you for the question, Trustee Gator. Anyone else on the board? Okay, Mrs. Josie, thank you very much for your presentation, all that you do, and leaving your contact information for public and general questions. I would encourage anybody who's had questions like this. That's a great way to really articulate your question and get a great answer. So appreciate the presentation tonight, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Stay well, everybody.
You bet. All right. Let's move on to our consent agenda. This is minutes from the March 9, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting. Do I have any issues with this consent agenda? Okay, that being said, can I get a motion to approve? Go ahead.
I think in the minutes somewhere, trustee Jerome voted yea and nay.
Yea and nay on the same issue?
Yeah. Can we just double-check to make sure that? And I think, I don't remember what it was specifically.
Well, can't we search for that later?
Oh, I know. It was the human being.
Oh, the human being. Yeah, he was a nay. Sure. He was a nay. All right. Can we make that correction, please? All right, good enough. Can I get a motion to approve with that correction? March 9, 2021, Board of Trustees minutes.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections noted.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to action items. Item D1. Assistant Community Activities Commission requests to hold the Wellington Easter Egg event. And before we, I think we have Richard on tonight. But before we get into it, I just received some information I think that's important to share with all of you. This is handed down from the State Department via our town administration, and we're at level yellow concern. And one of the notes here that's important for this topic tonight is no outdoor state restrictions. That's what it says right here. So that kind of helps out a little bit, maybe. Still got to go through it all, though.
Could you repeat that a little louder, Mayor Hammond? It's a little hard to hear you.
Yes, yes, trustee Gator, that the new yellow alert leveled yellow from the State Department, I hope I'm saying that right, no outdoor state restrictions. So I would imagine the county and everybody else will probably follow suit. So that's good news for us. Right now.
So for the people that couldn't hear, it goes into effect on March 24th. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
So, okay. We can move on to this item. We've got Richard on. Hey, Richard, tell us all about your request.
Basically, we put in, we'd have four groups, 175 each. The county shot it down, said we only could have one group, 175. With the past contingency that kicked us out of Harvest Farm because we wouldn't be compliant, the board wanted to push it up to the mayor and trustees to decide. But we also have option B, where we voted to do like we did last year, a drive-through. And we have permission from Icestone to use the traffic flow at dismissal to hand the Easter egg out to the families, and that would be in compliance. And I've been in talk with the library, and they would hand Easter eggs out to families that show up.
Is that what the CAC wants to do?
We're given the mayor and trustees options.
What's the other option?
Either we hold with the latest information you just gave. If the board of the House lets us go with it, we'll go with Harvest Farms. If they don't, then we'll hand the eggs out like a drive-through, like we did to our lights.
I think given the information with the current state guidelines, you would probably just follow normal operating procedure, get your normal special event permits and permission from the property owners to hold the event. And I'm not really sure we need to provide approval.
Kind of agree. Anyone else? Information we have, I mean, this makes everything a lot easier.
Excuse me, gentlemen, everybody, trustees. Could you speak a little more clearly into your microphones? I'm having a heck of a time here.
No, I know. I get that, and I had that the other night when I was at home. I know. So with this new information, trustee McDonald alluded to the fact that maybe we don't have an issue here tonight anymore, and the CAC can just move along with its normal course of operations and see what happens.
I don't see a reason why we need to take action.
Right.
So the only concern that I have, Mayor and Board, is that, I'm glad to hear, it's great to hear that the state is enacting that tomorrow. The only concern is if, for whatever reason, the county decides to hold to a higher level longer than the state, I don't know why they would, that I don't know if that means there's no longer a need for the special permit for the CAC. The only problem is that we won't meet again until after the event would have happened. So if, for whatever reason, there is an issue with the county not allowing the CAC to go forward, where do they go from there? That's the concern.
So let's be clear, it's not a permit that they're needing from the county. It's a variance request.
A variance. I apologize. Yes, you are correct, trustee McDonald.
They're two separate things. So I still don't think that we need to take any action.
So I guess the question I have is, does the state change mean we no longer need a variance from the county to have our outdoor event at all? Meaning the county is no longer involved, period? Is that the understanding that everyone else has?
What would be your interpretation with the state supersede the county?
I have not read this. I haven't seen the state position. But my impression would be that the county, I think, would still have to take some action, but I don't know that. I think the county has guidelines in place. And I would guess that the state guidelines don't overwhelm the county's action. But I suspect the county will follow the state. Ms. Garcia, I mean, no more than I do.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. So this information that came out is what they call Dial 3.0 out of the state. And it just came out probably about 5:45 tonight. I don't believe the county has had an opportunity to respond yet. And more than likely, everybody knew this was happening. So hopefully, they have something to roll out pretty quickly. I'm at the state in the information that the county can create its own set of guidelines. And all of us in municipal and local government are really hoping that all of our counties go with what the state is saying, just to keep things a little bit easier. Of course, there's no guarantee of that.
Right.
Well, if it puts trustee Gator's mind at ease, I think it's rather inconsequential to motion to approve hosting the Easter egg hunt event.
Inconsequential to do that tonight? I kind of like to see the process play out. I think it's going to go forward. That's my gut feeling. Any other options?
It doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to me? I mean...
Well, I'm thinking, and I'm going to hold the same position with this as I did when there was an outcry for this board to come out and make statements about restaurants and bars and other businesses violating state orders. I believe it's up to the individual. If they choose to follow whatever regulations are out there, that's your choice. It's also your choice to violate them. I'll be honest with you. I've been violating the health orders the entire time. That's my personal choice. I haven't stood on a soapbox until now and said that. But I see no need to draw unwanted attention from any other sources of government. My thought is if the CAC wants to put on this event, we as a board have entrusted them to make good decisions. If that's the decision they make, I'm okay with it.
I'd like to follow up that statement as well.
I'd like to follow up that statement as well. A similar, the similar sentiment of I am not interested from the perspective of our town making a statement that goes against county or state guidelines in any way whatsoever. So I would like to see what the county responds to this last minute news. And I suspect it's going to follow in a similar theme. Based on the numbers, but we, Nama County versus others in Colorado. But I am not interested in making a statement that makes the town of Wellington stick out in this sense and stand against the others for something that will not likely have any impacts whatsoever. So my recommendation, and I don't think we need to make this necessarily from the perspective of the board, but for any projects and any events, you always have to have risk planning of if this situation happens, we go this way. If the scenario changes, this is our fallback plan. I would suggest, and I entrust those that risk management and assessment should be handled well by the CAC because they're a dedicated group of volunteers and to do what they think is best that will meet any required guidelines at that time to give our kids a great experience. So I have no doubt that that won't happen, but I don't think a statement from the board is necessary to make that happen and move forward.
Trustee Whitehouse, got anything?
I, I would have to, I think trustee Kenny really summed it up pretty well. And again, I mean, it does come down to dollars and cents and about all the funding coming down the thing. I think, I think there's no reason for us to go out in there. I think, again, I think trustee Kenny said it all.
Okay. I don't, I don't want to hear, I don't hear anything from this board wanting to move forward with any motion on this at all that I know of.
So I guess I'm still a little confused. So are we basically saying we're just going to leave that to the CAC's best judgment to do whatever they want with the event? Regardless of what the county does or does not do?
I think so. I, go ahead. That's what I'm saying.
So I mean, if we're saying we're going to leave it in the CAC's hands, I'm comfortable with that, but that also may mean that if the CAC decides to hold the event and the county decides not to follow the state guidelines and we're giving basically CAC permission to do what they will with the event. That's where, that's the only question I have. If we're not saying that, then we need to say something one way or the other. We need to say either yes, you can, as long as the county changes, or we need to say or we just say we're trusting you guys to make a decision one way or the other.
That's not what I was saying, John, just to clarify my statement. My statement is that I, I have confidence that the county will follow the state direction. So the event as planned at Harvest Farms will be in compliance and not require variance. That, that is my statement and I'm, I'm confident in that will happen. But as I mentioned for that planning, if things don't go as planned, I do suggest that they have a backup plan that would be able to accommodate or do something. The drive-through sounds like a, the backup plan that they've already designated. And I would say, let's not forget about the backup plan because there is a risk available here. But my statement was not to avoid compliance. Mine was that I'm confident that the event as planned will be in compliance.
Trustee McDonald, got anything? Did you want to add to that? Or further clarify?
No.
I don't know that we want to put all that weight on the board or on the CAC. I think that's a decision we need to make.
I think that we can support our community event without is, if this is our town and this is our event. And if we want to have an event and we feel like we can put it on safely, then we can empower the CAC to do that. I think that, and maybe trustee Gator, you can provide some clarification on this. What is your underlying concern for bringing this to the board, asking for this, this statement or request for approval?
Absolutely. So the thought of the CAC was when the, because again, this is prior to the information that came out today at 5:45 that came back from the county was saying basically that the limit on the event, instead of being the individual groups of 175, that it was going to be 175 total for the entire event. And so what the CAC wanted to do was they said, well, we could potentially hold the event still, but do it on town property and just not abide by the 175 total. Still do all the other things. But that was something that they did not feel was appropriate decision for the CAC to make. That was something that they needed to bring to the Board of Trustees to say, is this something that you are willing to allow us to move forward with? And if the answer to that was no, as Mr. Bacon shared, they do have a backup plan where they can distribute those eggs at either the high, I think the middle school or from the library as well. But that was something they felt, and I, I agreed, that that's not a decision that the CAC should be making. That's a decision that this board needs to make as to whether or not we will allow the Easter event to go forward. Now, obviously, we're getting new information today that it sounds like it might be able to move forward anyways without us having to say anything, but that's still up in the air because we don't know what the county is going to do. And so I would agree with Mayor Pro Tem Knutson that one way or the other, and even if the answer is if we, we need to give direct, we need to make that decision. And if that decision is if the county follows the state, hold the event as normal. And if the, if the county does not follow the state, keeps a high level of restriction, then you do the handing out at the school. Or we tell them, you can hold the event regardless and make changes. One way or the other, I think we need to give them guidelines as far as what they can or cannot do with the event. Because it is a fluid situation.
I, I think trustee Whitehouse, I, I don't think making a statement about telling a town group that they can thumb the nose at the health department. I don't think that's a position we want to find ourselves in. I just don't think that's the type of attention we want to draw to ourselves. Again, if you can do this event in compliance with the, hopefully the new codes that come out or clarified this week, great, go with that. If it doesn't work out, go with Plan B, but I, I would feel very uncomfortable by suggesting that the town should take an action that is contrary to the health guidance. Personal opinion.
Okay.
Yeah. I agree. This is the first event of many that I'm hoping to see this spring and summer. So I don't think this is a great time to, for our town to make a statement against county and state requirements. I think they, that we, the what will be allowed or what won't be allowed will be known at a county level, and that's what we should follow. We should initiate whatever backup plan is available for the event, if that's not available as an option. And then people should participate at their comfort. So.
So if I'm understanding what I'm hearing from our board, there's quite a few people on our trustees that you know, really aren't, and I'll get to the public here in a minute. Really don't want to give approval to something like this, that if it goes against the county's regulations. I mean, we don't want to make the statement. We don't make, we don't want to make the vote. Not necessarily. Is that what I'm hearing? We don't want to do that. Kind of what I've heard.
I can speak as trustee McDonald, an independent trustee. I don't want to make a statement on behalf of the entire board. If we made the decision to give the CAC the permission to have the Easter egg event, just that statement, if there was a negative ramification from the county or the state, as a trustee, I would be comfortable owning whatever consequence comings, comes our way from that. I think that given the information that we got from the state, we're, we're overreacting a little bit tonight in this entire conversation. I believe that trustee Kenny is, is correct that the county will be following suit with the state here pretty quickly. So it is a very interesting position that we're in this evening, but individually as a trustee, and I'm okay accepting any consequences that would come along with the CAC wanting to hold their Easter egg event, however they want to hold their Easter egg event.
Trustee McDonald, point of clarification, even if they were in non-compliance to a county health, I'm not sure the proper word mandate, that's because I mean, what weighs potentially in the balance is future funding. Again, that may be extreme, but I don't necessarily know that one can guarantee that if we don't comply in some way, that that funding would be guaranteed in the future. And, and maybe I'm being a little cautious in this regard, but it's substantial amount of money flowing out of the feds and that funds all comes with strings.
Trustee Whitehouse, that is a great question. And I would agree with that. And I can rephrase my statement to say that I am comfortable supporting the plans that the CAC has presented this evening. It sounds like they have come up with some options that would fit within the guidelines for either scenario. So I, it sounds like they've done a really great job planning for the event. They've got a couple of options to fit either scenario. And with the rapidly evolving situation, they did a great job planning for this. And if the situation changes two or three days before the event and it requires board action in order for them to be able to move forward because of an action that we take tonight, I don't want to do anything that's going to prevent them from moving forward. So based on the state information that we have now, it doesn't sound like we really need any board action for them to hold their event.
I, I, I kind of agree. I don't think we need any action. I think we just follow the news and get ready to have your event. That's what I think is getting ready to happen here. Hey, you know, we had other events. We had the Halloween event. We did all that kind of thing. You know, and that was during the red zone. County didn't do anything.
There were way more than 175 people there that day.
2,000 people. There are 2,500 according to the Main Street program and, and it was great. So I, you know, I don't have a problem with the Easter egg hunt. I really don't. And I don't know if it needs board action or not. I, we're just trying to what is it, a blessing to go against the county? We didn't do that for the Halloween event. I just did it.
I believe they had a county, they had a variance from the county health department for the event that was held on Halloween.
Correct, trustee Gator, but we did openly exceed the attendee allowance.
I guess a question I have also have is is Harvest Farms going to allow the CAC to use their facility? At, at this current time, the answer is no. Is that correct? Trustee Gator?
And as we stay within the county health requirements.
Okay, so as of before, I mean, okay, so on the state currently, they're not going to allow you to hold an event there at all, or they're one, they're going to make you stick to the 175 capacity. Is that what we're doing right now?
That is correct.
Okay, so basically what you're asking us is to use town property to exceed the 175. In essence, that's what's being asked.
What I'd like to ask is give us permission to hold the event, but stay within county requirements. If they don't follow the state, we can do the drive-through. If they follow state, we'll hold it at Harvest Farms.
Okay. What's wrong with that?
It doesn't require board.
Doesn't require board action to do that.
But I think that it's a great opportunity to open it up to the public and get some additional feedback.
All right. Let's do that. We'll go ahead and move to the public this time.
We have Wyatt Curtis. If you can unmute yourself, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Wyatt Schwanneman Curtis, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, 3737 Franklin. I do sit on the CAC board. The only thing I am curious about with this is, and I don't know if Hallie's there to answer this, but if we have to resubmit a variance notice to the county since the restrictions have changed in the last 15, 20 minutes, so.
We'll find out right away on that one.
Okay. Other than that, you know, I, I agree with Rich. I think we need to do, stay with county guidelines, but hopefully it just works out in our best interest and we can do it at Harvest Farms. So that's all I have.
All right. Next.
We have Hannah. If you can state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hannah Misha, 6995 Mount Democrat Street. I just wanted to put something.
We can't hear you anymore, Hannah. I think you're muted.
Still muted?
There you go. You're.
You're good now.
Okay. As a youth worker, I wanted to point out that youth suicides in Colorado have gone up by 58% and in the last few years, and that mental health is also part of health and a big part of mental health is being outside, being with other people, having activities like this. And I know it seems kind of like, oh, it's just a silly Easter egg hunt and it doesn't really matter that much, but the suicide rate speaks differently. That lockdowns have really harmed a lot of people's health and have killed people. And I, I understand it's really uncomfortable to stand in open defiance against a governor, especially when he's been willing to make an example of people who've done so before within the case of certain restaurants and things. But it can be your responsibility to speak out against a leader if they're wrong. And I think for this town, it's really important that these events begin again and resume and continue to happen. And whether, I understand not wanting to draw undue attention or like make a big deal out of something. If you can get away with not doing that, I think that's pretty wise. But just consider that, that I think this really does matter to a lot of people, especially younger people. And there may come a time when we have to say that this is important enough for our town and it's worth it that we're going to do something that may or may not be popular. So, or may or may not be popular with the county or the state. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have Jess. If you can state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Jessie and I live in the Harvest Village neighborhood. And I do not think that we necessarily even need to have a backup plan for the Easter egg hunt. I agree with a lot of what has been said and trustee McDonald, especially I think it should be up to our town, what events we hold. I also just wholeheartedly agree with the two gentlemen that spoke at the start of the meeting. I believe in the constitution and I believe that we need to stand up for our rights. I don't think we need to ask permission from anyone to gather and put on a a community event that will be enjoyed by a lot of people. And I have actually spoken with the towns of Monument and Woodland Park this week. And both of them have challenged some of the state's guidelines and restrictions during the pandemic. Monument especially has asked the state what makes some businesses essential and others not essential. And they really pushed to keep everything open. Woodland Park has pushed back against the mask mandates, which, you know, regardless of how you feel with masks, I do think that everything should be a personal choice for your body and also just anything that is a regulation. I understand it's for the safety of the community, but I do think that based on the constitution, we each have our own individual rights, as long as we're not harming anyone else. And I know that with masks, that can be argued forever. But Woodland Park pushed back against that mandate and they received no repercussions. Both towns encouraged our town to proceed with the egg hunt if we do feel comfortable. And they based on their experience, they left me feeling really secure and encouraged that severe consequences are not a threat to our town. Sounds like worst thing that could happen is we could be shut down with that particular event. So even even if we were, I think based on feedback from the, from our town and our citizens, it sounds like we're happy to take the risk and we really are looking forward to this event. Um we don't necessarily need to broadcast it, but it is something that our town values. Um Windsor also plans to have a public Easter egg hunt, so I feel like that should encourage us as well. But yeah, I think that our town just needs to stand up as our own town and decide what's good for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
We have Christine Gator. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Ma'am, oh yeah, um Christine Gator, 8132 Fourth Street. Uh I would like to have the Easter egg hunt be something like the Halloween event where we exceeded the numbers um organically, um not on purpose. And let's just do it like that. Let's just have, hold the Easter egg hunt and um not stop anyone from coming. And then I want to respond to um our funding and the fear of losing our funding. And I just want to remind the board that our town's sales tax revenue actually increased during 2020. So our town is doing really well on its own, and I don't think we need the government's money because what the government pays for, the government controls, and I don't want Wellington to become a welfare town. So um I don't think we should do things out of fear, fear of losing money. Um I just want to leave you with a couple quotes. Um there's a proverb that says, "The fear of man bringeth a snare." And then Harry Potter says, "We must all face the choice between what is right and what is easy." So I'm asking the board to hold the Easter egg hunt and just let as many people come as they want. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Next, we have Christie Cannon. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, hey, this is Christie Cannon, 686 Main Street. I just want to say that um I would recommend that we follow exactly what was done with the Halloween festival because that was all pre-approved by the county. And so we handled that really, really well and did not have any issues. I'm not comfortable risking our reputation as a town by actually holding things against guidelines by the county or the state. Um even the previous speaker that talked about towns like Windsor and Monument, those towns have never really followed any of the guidelines. I mean, they're kind of known for that through the state. So I would be really comfortable with our town doing this in a really reputable and and responsible way. So so I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Next.
We have no other hands raised.
We'll close the virtual portion of the public comment, open it up to this room. So anyone wants to start to come up and speak, now's your chance.
Shrelle Teats, 4525 Ingalls Drive. So it's difficult because I'm here representing myself as a resident here in Wellington, but I also have background knowledge because I am a CAC board member. Um right now, I'm representing myself and just saying that looking back and glancing 4th of July 2020, we were on safer at home orders, level two, and an estimated 1,500 people gathered on the lawn at Wellington Middle School to watch the fireworks show go off. Right then and there, we set a precedence. Brief, fast forward again, October 31st, 2020. Again, we Laramo County, we were in safer at home, level two orders. They had CAC voted against having the trick-or-treat down Main Street event because they were citing concerns over safety. Um and also county guidelines, we were at like 50 people then, is pretty much what we were told. And then it moved forward hosted by another board here in town, the Main and Streets Program. And in their annual report dated the 26th of January 2021, it was estimated 2,500 people attended. Everybody knew it was against the county. You know what? It was a celebration. It was Halloween. Kids deserve to experience it. They don't understand COVID. So that was one of those things. This last Saturday, March 20th, thousands of people all around the state of Colorado stood up and celebrated the great meet-in. Multiple mayors, multiple towns were the ones serving their townspeople during those events. Hundreds of people showed up to all of them. I have not seen any cease and desist orders go out. I pay attention to those public pages very well. Um the Double Check Arena, they saw over 350 attendees in the first hour. That's a lot of people in a small space. It's been cited that there's been some concerns over funding. So I went and pulled numbers for Weld County compared to Laramo County. Weld County receives a lot more funding than Laramo County does. Um none of their funding was restricted. Weld County has been open since COVID started. So I can attest, you will receive a cease and desist order because I reached out and requested to find out what happens if someone does defy these orders. You'll receive a cease and desist order first, and then if you choose not to cease and desist, then you can face fines. Um I have yet to see a single town in all of my research, not a single town. I've seen one business, Colorado Springs Jim was the owner of the restaurant. He received a cease and desist order from the state of Colorado. Weld County received almost $10 million in funds for COVID relief, and then they also just received $3 million in grants to be distributed by Gold County businesses.
Ms. Teats, you have a closing statement? You exceeded your your time limit.
Oh, I apologize. I do have a closing statement. We do have tentative plans to encourage these coverings. Online registration was planned for contract chasing. Sanitation and first aid stations were planned. Assigned volunteers will not be leaving a single zone area, so there is a total of four zones planned. Each zone will have 175 people attending the zone. If you look at the actual restrictions listed, and I have it here if anyone would like to see it, it specifically states 175 people per zone. So we could have had up to 875 people if we had five zones laid out 50 feet apart.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Already had COVID.
Yeah, we still got to follow procedure.
Thank you for your patience.
All right. Yeah, that was a lot to chew on. Um you guys were about as clear as mud from where I was sitting.
Well, not too many insults, please.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that with the aggregate of what everybody was saying, it was hard to tell what the final push was. So it's not an insult, it's an observation. Um, you know, we we know now that children don't spread COVID the way that adults do. You can't trace a single major outbreak to any school or anything. That's why the people forced Mayor Cuomo and not Cuomo, um de Blasio in New York to open up the schools again, and we haven't seen any rise since he did that. Uh and that's a huge, major metropolitan area. I look at these kids' activities and the stuff that my own four children have gone through. You know, everything's, sorry guys, we can't do that COVID. Sorry, sorry, sorry. You know, your your childhood, how long does this stretch on? My nine-year-old, you know, my four-year-old who's really just starting to form memories for her entire life. You know, so what if somebody takes some funding away? You know, we don't let people hold us hostage. You know, we we looked at sanctuary cities in California and the previous president said, well, we're gonna take funding away from this. The courts go, oh, no, you can't. Just because they're not following federal law doesn't mean you can take away, you know, uh funding for law enforcement programs or, you know, whatever it is. Money that's directly related to the issue at hand. Well, they can't come in and take our funding away because we decided to have an Easter egg hunt. You know what? Call it a religious event if you want to. It's Easter. They can't restrict that. It is a religious event, even if you're not practicing. That's what it is. Um, you know, just take a stance. You don't have to make a statement. We're just asking you to be clear so that the people know what they can expect and where you stand. We just want to know. We want certainty in these uncertain times. That's it. You know, and I respect all of you for everything that you guys do because you do really make some hard decisions here. This is just another one where we just, we need to know. Our families want to know, especially our kids want to know. And I want to know that I can go home and I can tell them, hey, guys, there's this great event coming and I can't wait to take you to it. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Mario Quinones. I live in Wellington Village.
Sir, I'm sorry. Would you speak into the microphone? Thank you so much. Otherwise, people can't hear you online. Thank you so much.
My name is Mario Quinones. I live in Wellington Village. Um I'm gonna be citing an article that was released six hours ago by 991. It was written by Jacob Laxson. And it says, "Laramo County meanwhile has its own mask order in place on top of state guidance." When asked about the possibility of summer events in an email, Laramo County Department of Health and Environment spokesperson Corey Wilford said, "Currently, there are no additional requirements in place for outdoor events. We do not yet have guidance for summer events locally. We anticipate having more information in the next couple of weeks." So I would just ask the board that if the county didn't follow suit with the state, that we would allow the Easter egg hunt to go on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come on up, sir. Yeah, I'm Steve Sarno. Um I I think just for clarification, because I'm a little confused, to be honest with you. Um as the C, I'm talking to the CAC board member now. So if Harvest Farms says we can have it, then we've got the blessing to have it, like we voted to have it unrestricted. Which that was my thoughts anyway. And again, if, you know, people don't feel safe, they don't have to go. Nobody forces anybody to go. Just don't go. But if the Harvest Farms says, no, we can't, then our second choice was to have it at the community park, which is town property. So we were looking for the board from guidance to say, okay, if that's the case, are you okay with that? Even if the almighty county says no. Again, going against all that I spoke of earlier about our constitutional rights. So we we just felt that we're fine going ahead with it because that's the way we voted. But ultimately, I think it's up to the board because the board controls the town-owned property. So if we had it there and then the county came back with their heavy hand and said, you violated our, whatever they are called, then I think ultimately we would need to say, well, the board gave us, you know, their old permission to use it. So I I just think we're we're just looking for some clarification. Because originally, my thought was if we cancel it, then we let the community know and they can get hold of the county and have the county explain to all the community why they canceled it. It wasn't us. So if we're able to have it at the town, I think we just need to know whether we have the blessing of the town board.
So Mr. Sarno, I I just want to ask for clarification so that I can be sure that I'm understanding you clearly. So from the CAC's perspective, the ask would be for the approval of the board to host the Easter egg event. And in the event, Harvest Farm option isn't available, that the CAC has permission to use town property to host the event.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I, you know, whether that comes in an official motion and a vote, that's entirely up to you. But I think we as a board need to know that we work under the umbrella, if you will, of the town. Um so since it is town property, I think it's only proper for us to get the blessing. Now, if the town says no, then uh I don't know, you know, I don't even want to, you know, I don't want to go there. So unless you have any other questions from clarification. Okay.
Will you be in the bunny suit? Oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that out loud. Hopefully there aren't children watching.
Strike that from the record.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, bring it back to the board.
There was one hand that got raised late. Mayor Hammond, did you want to recognize that individual?
I don't know. I mean, you know, when you did, you tried to go through procedure, if I open that up, there's gonna be more.
It, I just wanted to let you know, mayor, that's all. It's it's your call.
How many you got there? One more.
Gary, if you can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This isn't Gary. I'm sorry. This is Tracy Lo. It always comes up under his name. I live at 6873 Mount Toll Court. Um my current concern right now with this conversation is that as a board of trustees, you should at the most be complying and following all laws and regulations for the town. So having one of the board of trustees tonight, John Jerome, going on record stating that he does not believe on going, um following regulations and that he personally doesn't follow regulations is super concerning to me. I think that we should follow regulations. I think the idea that going against them just because we really want it really bad instead of because this is what we should be doing is a really horrible precedent. I am concerned with some of the citizens' comments tonight, especially um Ms. Teats there talking about um Weld County. We're not in Weld County, so what Weld County does is should be irrelevant to the town of Wellington. So those are just concerns I would like. I believe that you guys, I didn't think it was unclear. I thought from what I heard was that the CAC was giving permission to go ahead with it as long as the state guidelines and the county guidelines um were the same. Because you're not going to be able to have it at Harvest Farm if they're not. They've said that. And I think they should be able to follow that. I feel a little unclear, so I'm sorry that I'm kind of babbling. But I think the the board has been clear, and what I do want to put on record is that I'm super concerned that some of these board members are putting on record that they don't care what we do and what the regulations are. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Close the public comment of this evening.
Mayor, I do have some comments that were emailed in.
They were?
Yes.
Okay.
The first comment is from Kimberly Shrugg, and she stated she is not in favor of Wellington voting to go against the county in regards to COVID safety measures. The next comment is from Jenna Clark. "Our family would not only look for this to happen this spring, but support the choice to attend this in our community. We feel that families who are not ready to attend an Easter hunt event can create their own fun in their homes. Families who wish to attend this public event can also choose to join in this fun activity if they choose to." The next one is from Samantha Beckman. "Has anyone heard of the Constitution, Bill of Rights, Neuberger Code? Open up and let the kids have an Easter egg hunt. I can't even believe this is an issue. How many people are allowed in Walmart or King Supers? I hope that you see where this is going. This is an attempt to roll out a mandatory vaccine program. Very soon, we won't be allowing, we won't be allowed to travel or shop without being incubated with this experimental gene therapy, which by the way, has already killed over 1,500 people. Have you ever heard of incrementalism? This virus has a recovery rate of over 99%. CDC just released data proving that wearing masks has very little to no effect on stopping this virus, less than 2% to be exact. This is a psychological experiment." What about our freedom? What about our bodily autonomy? Once we give those up, we won't get them back. What about the effects this is having on our children, our jobs? I'm not going to ask permission for my God-given rights and you should be grateful that town hasn't figured that out too soon. Shame on you. Let the kids have an Easter egg hunt.
I'm sorry. Do you mind muting the community? Thank you.
We just muted the community?
No, well, there was Ms. Ms. Lo was still on.
Oh.
The next comment is from Kathy Waddellis. It is becoming increasingly obvious that our freedom is not going to be voluntarily handed back to us. If we want freedom to celebrate our long-lasting traditions, we must be daring. I agree with the C A C that the health department orders should be violated and our Easter egg hunt should proceed as it did before the COVID mandates provided an excuse for entities like health departments to behave like tyrants. Bad rules need to be disobeyed. Children are the least likely demographic to contact, contract and suffer from this coronavirus. And parents are the appropriate people to decide what their children can or cannot do. The next comment is from Linda Stoddard. My name is Linda Stoddard and I am adamantly opposed to the Wellington trustees overriding the Limer County variants granted for the Easter egg hunt this year. I'm a member of Wellington Event Committee, including Wellarama, Wellington Market, Sparge Timberfest and the Point Five K Family Run, and I coordinate volunteers for the Wellington Brew Fest. I am invested in Wellington's community events and I very much understand COVID fatigue and this is desire to once again celebrate our community. Due to the Wellington community's adherence to restrictions by banding together to maintain distancing and other mandates, we have been eligible for several level of statuses and we are very close to variants being loosened or perhaps ending. I firmly believe that overriding the variants for the Easter egg hunt will jeopardize each of the other events, including remaining C A C events that follow April third. The power to allow large gatherings this spring and summer lands, not with Wellington's trustees, but with Limer County, that is entity that can deny or retract variances, find communities and even shut down events in progress. It is my sincere hope that our trustees will consider not it's my sincere hope that our trustees will consider the immediate desire to hold the event, but the long-term positive consequences of honoring the variants for the Easter egg hunt and the likelihood that in the near future, Wellington community will be able to celebrate unrestricted events. I ask the trustees to please honor the work that event committees are doing and to provide an environment in which upcoming twenty twenty-one events can take place. The next comment is from Christine in Jeans. I apologize for the pronunciation of the last name, but it's a shumoto. The pandemic is not yet controlled. It would be an immature and short-sighted decision to continue with Easter egg hunt this year. Holding a large event now not only violates Department of Health regulations, but also jeopardizes our community, community's imminent return to normalcy. We are so close to universal adult vaccination eligibility and finally starting to put the pandemic behind us. We cannot let our guard down now just for some parents to snag a photo of their kids with a person in a bunny suit. Private citizens can do what they please on their own property, but the town of Wellington cannot sponsor or endorse the public event that undermines the worldwide effort to beat the pandemic. This situation calls for a little more patience. We hope in a year, we can look forward to another town Easter egg hunt instead of mourning the loss of Wellington's reputation and the lives of its residents due to an ill-advised, unsponsored, super-spreader event. The Wellington Board of Trustees should deny any and all requests to violate Department of Health regulations, including the twenty twenty-one Wellington Easter event, Easter event. The next one is from Jesse Andrin. I would really love for the Easter egg hunt to happen in our town. I have spoken with several cities about them defying state and county guidelines in different ways and the repercussions are basically non-existent. I don't think our town should live in fear, but I think we should be bold and stand up for the things that we value, treasure and believe should happen as a town. The last one is Sherry Rodriguez. Please open up the Easter egg hunt so the kids can have some fun and have a normal Easter. And that is all.
No more public comment tonight. Okay, we're done with that. We're good. And they're all good. They're all good comments. I mean, we heard both sides. So you've heard from both sides tonight. So you know, that's, they're important too. The other side's just as important. I really wish this wasn't up on our board, actually. Got a lot of other things. This, you know, I know this is important to a lot of families and kids and I support Easter, you know, all that. But we got this thing from the state right here. Why can't we give it a day or so and find out what happens? Might be a moot point.
So during public comment, I've been reaching out to the managers around the state of Colorado and most are waiting until tomorrow. We're waiting on our counties to respond to the state guidelines. Decisions are being made by either the department that is holding the event or the committee that's holding the event on how to proceed. They seem to have, everybody seems to have that backup plan if it doesn't go through. But it is, I just heard from Windsor. I've talked to Monument. There's been several others. I talked to Mead just texting back and forth, trying to figure out what people are doing so that we can potentially stay in alignment or not have to do anything outside of what everybody else is doing. So what is the date of the event? What is the date of the event?
April third, Saturday.
We got.
So that's the information I have.
That's quite a few days away.
Correct.
So the concern is not the number of days. It's the matter of we, well, again, depending on what happens is whether or not we as a board of trustees are going to have to take any action before that.
We can take an emergency meeting, John.
Okay, if we as a board are willing to take an emergency meeting, I have no problem with that. Just I want to make sure that we're willing to do that if we need to, if we're not going to make a decision right now.
I can be here.
I, this trustee Whitehouse, I mean, I thought we did, I think we're going around and around. Thought we were going to do it if they're in compliance and I think they will be, you know, I don't believe, pardon me, there's any action required of us at this point. And I think it's, we've got a couple of other big, clearly hit a, hit a spot here, but we've got some other stuff to attend to this evening.
If I might, Brad March, for clarification, it would be my understanding that if the county comes back and the county allows the event to occur, the board would allow the use of the park and there wouldn't be a problem. That's not the understanding.
That's right.
There is a, there is a very clear process for events in the town of Wellington that require permits and things to the town through fire district. There's a very clear process for events that all events follow. If the event were to change, it would need to follow our own process in order to be an event in the town of Wellington. So I mean, my stance on this is very clear. They should continue planning and execute this event as able to. I don't see, and I have no interest in making, taking an action from the board on this. This is event planning items and working with risks associated with event planning is if there was a storm or whatever the case might be. So whatever is possible should happen. I, I don't think, and I think it's an overstep really for us to say that you should do something outside of the planning of what's available for this event to happen. I don't see any further action needed from our board to do this. I'd love to volunteer though, so please send me up. Drive-through or otherwise.
So it sounds like I'm hearing that we don't, we don't have anything to do here tonight on this. Is that, we're going to wait and see. Is that what I'm hearing? That's what I'm hearing.
It's what I'm hearing from some members of the board and maybe I'm the only one that thinks otherwise. And if that's the case, that's fine. The one concern I did want to bring up, this has come up several times. It's been raised again today is that the major concern that I keep hearing as well, the funding, we need to make sure that we aren't getting on the bad side of the state and the county. And I understand there's a point where we're not looking to intentionally go out of our way to do that, but from my perspective, at the end of the day, I was not elected to represent the county of Limer. I was not elected to represent the state of Colorado. I was elected to represent the citizens of the town of Wellington. And if I'm going to make all of my decisions based on county funding, state funding, federal funding, and not in the best interest of the citizens of our town, there's a problem with that because where do we draw that line? So that, that is a concern that I have because I keep hearing it's about the funding. It's about the funding. And I mean, if that's all we're elected to do is get funding from other government entities, we just need to make that clear to our citizens that that's our role. But that's a concern that I have.
The repercussions of being whacked with the stick in this situation is not losing funding. Funding to the C A C and hosting these events comes from our general fund, which comes from the properties. It's not from the relief fund. So let's make our information fused with the emergency declaration, funding and hosting a special event. So sticking to the point, funding has absolutely nothing to do with this conversation. It's about a community event.
I would agree with you, but.
Don't see you need to take any action this evening, myself.
I don't think we have the will of the board to take any action tonight. I, I think we need to see what's going to play out here. We've got good news.
Now, if we do need to hold a special meeting, I will make myself available.
I'll, I'll, I'll post a letter on everybody's door. Done it before.
Can I, can I circle back on something? Yeah.
I would think they would have it planned by now. You would have the Plan A and the Plan B. You've already told me you got it. All we need is another twenty-four hours here. Let's just wait and see. It might be a moot point tomorrow. So actually, we have a Plan A, Plan B and Plan C, correct? Plan A would be Harvest Farms. Harvest Farms. Plan B would be Wild Green Park and Plan C would be Drive-Thru, right? Okay, now I can understand some people's confusion because there's actually getting mixed signals from this board. I've already stated my position on this and we've got other board members that have stated opposite positions. And we have three board members that haven't really made a position, so I can understand the confusion. I don't know that the board voting on this is the right thing to do, but maybe some clarification on where the board stands as a whole. It's pretty easy to count numbers when you know where every board member stands on if something changes and goes wonky. You know, that's kind of what they're asking for, I think. And I don't really think we need to vote on it either, but I know, I know three people's opinion and I'm not real sure about three people's opinions, so if anybody wants to state their opinion that hasn't already, I would be glad to hear it.
All right, you're looking at me. Are you asking for my opinion?
My asking, we're like, I got my glasses on. I'm looking at all, everybody. If you want to take a poll, we can take a poll. Can't we take a poll? I mean, I, is that?
I want to be clear on what we're polling. So I guess.
Yes or no?
You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a bold step here and I'm, I'm going to support that. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then.
I'd like to motion that the town of Wellington allows the C A C to hold the Easter egg event. And in the event that they need the town's permission to use town property to hold a town event, they have the town's permission.
I second. Roll call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
No, because there is already a policy in place for public, for events. This is already an existing item.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
No.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Have fun. Not too much. Let's have fun. All right, we got to move on. We got a lot to do. Next event. Fourth of July fireworks contract award. Hallie.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Before you.
For coming tonight.
Am I coming through? Can you guys hear me?
Yep, you're good, Hallie.
Perfect. So before you tonight is the contract award for Be Like Productions. We have been working with them for the past couple of years and we are just amending the contract to renew for twenty twenty-one. They're requesting a total of thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, which is under the budgeted amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred. I have provided you the proposal as well from Be Like Productions. Unfortunately, tonight, Brian is not on the call. He had to get other priorities. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them the best I can. I am not a expert in these firework types, so I will do my very best.
Any question from the board on this?
Looks good to me. We get, we get, we get smiley face fireworks. I'm excited.
Okay, so no questions?
I see no hands raised at this time.
We'll close the public meeting too. Anyone inside want to talk about the fireworks? Okay, I'm bringing it back to the board. You're going to motion approve the contract.
So moved.
Roll call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Item three, ordinance one dash twenty twenty-one. It's an ordinance allowing water contribution requirements dedicated to be treated as pertinent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief.
Mr. Mayor. Late, but I do have a conflict.
Okay, well, we'll be, we'll be. I'll be brief. This has been before the board. On two other occasions, we have removed the emergency language. Ordinance is in substantially the same form as it was other than that, as was previously presented. If there's other questions, I'm happy to answer them. We provided an overview as well. Any question?
I have no questions. I have comments.
Okay, then. Let's hear.
I had an opportunity to speak with the North Pooter Board and run this by them because they are listed in the ordinance. And there are some significant concerns. In the prior meeting, trustee Jerome expressed an interest to want to pursue this to be innovative because other communities have done something similar. Well, other communities don't use North Pooter irrigation water. And what I've learned is, is that North Pooter shares are kind of like a gold bar. And C B T is kind of like a silver bar. And other water share companies have their form. They have a bronze bar or diamonds or whatever. So by us approving this ordinance, we would be violating North Pooter's agreement for their ability to provide C B T water as a combined. We can't, they can't divide up C B T share. It violates their bylaws of their their operating agreements. Additionally, Wellington, we're just investors with North Pooter. They still they, they own the decrease and so the water is allocated to us through the agreement. So now, if we take a share and we divide it up and put it on these lots, we still have to be, the water still has to be delivered to us. And we would still have to have an agreement with North Pooter that divides up these shares. Throughout, there would be additional losses several costs from the exchange potential of this agreement. So there would be shrinkage costs, carriage costs, storage costs, that also include evaporation as well as operational costs. So after you divide up the share into these little pieces and dedicate them to land and then you have all of those additional costs, it leaves next to nothing. So I understand the intent, but it doesn't provide the benefit that I think we're trying to get.
I get that.
And I think that we also have some future opportunities that'll be presented before this board to be innovative with our water.
Okay. Other comments from the board?
Let's, trustee, what else? I think trustee McDonald brings up some interesting points again about we are relying on North Pooter water. And I mean, in this whole process, have we discussed this with them? It's unclear to me. I mean, again, I think we thought we were doing something good, but are there some unintended consequences here that we don't fully understand is, would be my concern right now.
That's our question, trustee Whitehouse. And I did attend the last Pooter irrigation meeting. They did explicitly pull me aside and express some concerns. Spent some time with Ted with the Um, spent some time with Ted with the permission of their board. Getting as educated as I can to try and present the best information possible to the board this evening with their concerns.
Other comments?
I don't want to drag this item out, I guess, and I know.
Sense to me. Fine. I mean, I. Go ahead, trustee Gator.
So sorry, I just, I don't want to drag this out. I guess I'm just not understanding how the breaking, the shares apart is any different from what happens now because it has to be broken out to individual properties anyways currently. So I guess I, I wasn't part of that conversation, trustee McDonald. So I'm not quite understanding the difference here because to me it still has to be broken up per property. This doesn't change that. So I guess I'm not quite understanding the concerns.
It, it's a very, it's a very complicated process, trustee Gator. I'd be happy to sit down with you offline and spend a significant amount of time with you and with um, Ted, the North Pooter um, irrigation manager and explain how those, that works.
I don't know if that would be beneficial, but Ted is in the audience today and he does have his hand raised. I don't know if mayor, if you want to hear from him.
Absolutely. Ted, are you on?
I think he's muted.
He's getting there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, yeah, this is kind of an answer to uh, Mr. Gator. Um, as far as Wellington's decrees, or I should say water is set aside. Um, you are obligated to two thousand acre feet. And that water is not CBT nor ag. That comes from our south side decrees, which we have allotted for the town of Wellington. Now, I understand the confusion when it comes in to the sense of separating the CBT from ag. That's what you're already doing. But from a water provider's point of view, that is not how it goes. The decrees are set aside for municipal use. And therefore you are not dividing the ag versus CBT. If that makes any sense in the short time I have.
That does make sense. So is your concern that if we were to do this a pertinent where we allow a share to be attached to a residential property per se, that that would get into issues with separating CBT from ag or? The connection?
Yes, it would. If the town of Wellington expanded and uh, let's say expanded their water portfolio and used um, North Pooter. If you buy those shares, they come with the ag portion and the CBT portion. Now, if you de- dedicated those CBT portions to the development, that goes against North Pooter's bylaws of separating the shares. And North Pooter, A, would not do the accounting, or B, would not allow our water to be separated in such manner.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. So how does that happen now? So let's say a builder comes in, they pull a permit and they bring us one share of North Pooter water to build a residential house. How does that, because I, I'm assuming that it has to be separated at that point, or does both the ag and the CBT go to that house?
I, so the share is dedicated, but what I've done is the two thousand acre feet that is allocated through reservoir number three. It's actually south side decrees, which in that decree, it's listed for municipal use.
Okay.
And so if you got, if the town of Wellington starts to expand or go beyond the two thousand acre feet, that is going to require CBT, um, just due to the contract of the nineteen eighty four agreement. And therefore, it's, we're gonna have to either admin the, admin the contract or look at um, various other decrees to supplement your housing development.
Okay, so I think, so is it more of any growth at all, whether it's done through the water being attached to pertinent or it's any growth and dedication of additional shares? Is that the problem? Any additional shares that go beyond that two thousand is the concern?
Well, due to the contract, um, I, I realized that the town of Wellington has purchased an additional twenty seven shares, I believe, right off the top of my head. Um, due to the contract, you cannot attach that water to your municipal use contract at a reservoir number three. And so my best advice is um, sitting down with Ms. Ashley and looking at ways to open this contract and admin it.
Got it. So if I'm understanding correctly, it's not necessarily the pertinent, that just simply makes it a little bit more of an issue because we're dedicating those shares right away to a property versus them just sitting there, not dedicated anything. But we couldn't dedicate them even without the pertinent and be within our contract. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful and helped me understand the concern. So I appreciate you sharing that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, um, I'm not sure I agree with Mr. Mon's um, interpretation of contract. I don't know that that's relevant. I know that. And so I would suggest we draw this for the time being.
Yes.
Um, and bring it back up after we've talked for thirty months.
I think so.
Trustee McDonald's, um, having gotten involved in talking with Pooter and I think it's really beneficial. Uh, so if it takes no action, I think that's a good course.
Our water providers got an issue with it.
Agree.
Done deal, done deal.
Just don't do it.
Okay.
So, excuse me, point of information, can we withdraw this or do we have to postpone to a date certain?
I think you just take no action. Just take no, no motions, nothing. And at that point it dies.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
I don't think we have anything to move on here. That's my feeling. I don't think, I don't think we got enough information. Water provider, done market, done deal.
You know, it may be an opportunity later down the road, but with our current agreement, it, it's not worth the risk at this time.
We've got other issues to deal with first, it sounds like to me. They're still there. They've always been there. Thank you, Mr. Moon. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Let's move on to item four. Water Treatment Plant Supervisory Control Data Act, which is SCADA upgrade bid approval. DJ.
Good evening, man, board members. Um, I'll make a few kind of background comments or introductory information for these next two agenda items. And then turn it over to DJ for some more detailed discussion on the first of those. Um, quite some time ago, we learned that our current SCADA servers are planned to lose factory support at the end of twenty twenty one. Um, that was a concern. We were also becoming kind of more aware and concerned about a few other issues related to our SCADA system. Uh, reliability issues and really more importantly, security issues. I think um, um, most of us have heard the, the stories, the horror stories about um, cyber attacks on utilities of all sorts, ranging from just data breaches to um, you know, ransom schemes, all of those have cost utilities millions of dollars and loss of service and all kinds of bad things as a result. So we had kind of a range of problems that we wanted to solve with these two items. And knowing all this, we, we had prepared a budget last year for these um, for implementation this year. At that time, we did not yet have our design engineers on board for the expansion projects. We knew that we wanted these improvements to work seamlessly with the future expansion of both plants. So that this equipment would, would continue to work, you know, long into the future. Um, once that design engineer came on board, we were able to kind of work out some details on the, the specifications of these improvements in conjunction with um, uh, Timberline, who has provided much of our instrumentation and control work, including the programming for many years for us, has been extremely reliable and Johnny on the spot when we, when we have issues with those systems. So in summary, these, the, the, the improvements that we're going to describe in these next two items would all ultimately be installed with the expansion projects. Um, by accelerating this work, we're able to not only almost kind of remove those, these items from those future expansion projects and the budget for that. Uh, but more importantly, kind of solve our immediate problems of um, needing more advanced security, a little bit more reliability and capability from these systems. Uh, and of course, avoid losing uh, support for the servers that we have now, which would be um, unacceptable. So with that, I'll turn it over to DJ to talk a little bit more about the, the first of these items related to the water treatment plant.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, I don't know, uh, if I can add anymore. You said it quite eloquently. Um, these SCADA systems are all beyond the end of their life cycle. Um, coming on seven years, we have had some failures um, with our system. And uh, like you said, this has been a long endeavor. Both Jacobs and Timberline have been in conversation with this. Wanted to make sure that it was going to meet our current needs as well as be adaptable and expandable with the, the future upgrade as well. Um, SCADA in a broad sense is a broad term. There's many components to a SCADA system. Um, you have basically the brains, which is the server, main server. And you have many PLCs or HMIs, um, human machiner faces, programmable logistics, and all these SKIDS are talking to that brain. So, and that's what we're asking for on this purchase is to upgrade the brains, get it a little more intelligent. Um, with that, I am uh, open to any questions.
Any questions?
I, this is trustee Whitehouse. I had a question. Um, so you're saying, obviously if we're losing support of the current system, that's yeah, that's not good. I mean, is, does, I mean, do these systems just become, I don't say obsolete or or is, is, is the newer equipment we're going to purchase be uh, have a greater lifespan than, pardon me, like seven or eight years? Is that, is that a reasonable expectation?
Yes, uh, thanks for the question, trustee Whitehouse. So our current system has a life expectancy of five to six years with the Dell server. The new Strata server that we are proposing to you guys has a life expectancy of ten to fifteen plus years. There has been some instances where they last twenty years. Um, with that, the support is still um, maintained. Um, there has been instances where um, people get a call saying something's wrong with their computer before the operator even knew there was an issue with the, the computer. And with that, you have the redundancy where you would automatically switch over to the backup server. So the continuity of operation, you'd have no downtime. In our current dynamic, if I were to lose my SCADA system tonight, we are talking about twenty seven to thirty hours before I can get up and operational. Um, dependent on flow and how much the residents are using out of my tanks, I might not have enough water to provide this, the, the residents save drinking water during that duration. With this new upgrade, everything is seamless. It automatically switches over. They overnight the next part. It's a plug and play and you don't lose any type of production whatsoever.
That, thank you very much. That's a, that's a great answer. And it's also uh, interesting to hear about some of the issues of the older equipment that this will replace. So that's, that's pretty scary to hear that. So I think this is a good move.
Trustee McDonald got something.
Trustee White House was reading my mind. He asked the exact question I was gonna ask.
Anyone else?
So I know we're looking at upgrading the, or basically new water treatment plant facility. Will this equipment move over to it or would it be all new for that new facility?
No, it will move over. That's why we were really adamant about having the Jacobs controllers and Timberline work hand in hand with us to pick out this system. That would be a seamless transition. So the SCADA will move over as of course, we will add new PLCs and HMIs and controllers to it, but the brains will remain the same for decades.
Alright, thanks, Ian.
Good question.
Any others?
I did have a couple of questions. So uh, DJ, in one of the questions that was asked, I know you'd mentioned the old system that we have that life expectancy of five to six years. And you mentioned these new systems that have a ten to fifteen year lifespan. And are we guaranteed to have the support for those systems for that fifteen to twenty years? Or could we wind up in a same situation where they pull support for those systems in five years and we're having to upgrade?
No, good question, trustee Gator. No, the system and the support will remain with Stratus. They have a lifetime guarantee on all their servers and instrumentation and the hardware and the software might need to get upgraded, but the actual brains and the support will never change.
Okay, and that's different. We didn't have that with our existing systems. Is that correct?
We do have rudimentary system in place, but it's, with the system, it exhausts longevity.
Okay, but we don't have that level of support because you're telling us that support ends this year, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that support is dropped. So we're then, now we are slowly one hundred percent responsible for any faults or failures in getting our system back up.
Okay, and that is not even a remote possibility with these new systems. We could never lose that support.
Correct.
Okay. Um, the next question that I had is I know that the concern that I have is just the expense of that. Is this, are there, is this literally the only system that exists in the world that can do the job that it does? Is there no other system that exists on the planet?
That is, uh, I say no to that. There are other systems in there, but they all have their unique challenges. Um, this is not like a normal run of the mill computer where we can upgrade and plug and play and have it cheaper. Um, this is, yes, it is an expensive capital improvement upfront. But you're paying for the hardware. You're not paying for, a majority of it is the hardware, not the software. With that in place, if you do run the life cycle of this, you're talking about nine hundred dollars a month on just the operation costs over that course of the year. Um, there are other cheaper options out there. But you're going to be in the same situation five years from now, asking again for another thirty to forty five thousand dollars to update an, uh, an outdated system. This one will give you the peace of mind for ten to fifteen years, maybe even more. And you don't have to worry about this aspect anymore.
Gotcha. So there's no other systems that have that ten to fifteen year lifespan? This is the only one?
This is the only one so far.
And just to add to that, this is really kind of becoming the standard in our industry for all of these reasons. We're talking about many of the other utilities in this region have transferred over to, to the server systems for the security and just the peace of mind that, that they offer to the utility providers or the, the service providers, but also their customers.
Then the final question I have is that, do we have projects that we are willing to cut um, to make up the difference that you're asking for in going over the budgeted amounts? We drastically raised water rates the end of last year, beginning of this year, specifically because we had fund balance issues in our water fund. And so I am not comfortable approving additional expenditures out of that water fund. I understand it might be a small amount, but we've already gone back to our citizens and said, we need to raise your rates because of water fund issues. So if this is truly an, an expense that needs to happen now, I would like to see our staff find another project that is less important within the water fund to cut those funds from, rather than just taking that out of fund balance.
Trustee Gator, I can uh, speak to that a little bit. We uh, have looked at my CIP for twenty twenty one and beyond. Um, when we got to propose this last year, we're trying to be more mindful of our budget and what an actual true process is going to come. So we're trying to get closest the true project number as possible. But to answer your question, yes, we did go through our CIP and there are some projects that are low hanging fruit that would not hinder any operation or causing detriment to the plant if we do extend them or push them out or cut, cut them completely.
Okay, and I would be fine with that if we're willing to do that. So thank you. No other questions, mayor?
Thank you, trustee Gator. Thank you, DJ. Anyone else? Let's open it up to the public.
Yep, Christine Gator, if you can state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes to speak.
Christine Gator, eighty one thirty two Fourth Street. Um, yeah, I just want a second that we stay within the budget, especially because our water bills went up. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
We have no other public comment at this time.
Can we close the public portion, bring it back to the board? Can I get a motion to approve item four? The water treatment plant SCADA upgrade bid approval.
A move that we approve the water treatment SCADA plant upgrade with the stipulation that staff will remove the overage of the fifteen, five thousand nine hundred fifty seven dollars from other CIP projects to make up the difference.
Point of order, Mayor Hammond. I think I had the motion on the floor.
Oh, I think you did first. I gotta go that way, John.
Sorry, didn't hear it.
My second. Roll call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, move on to item five. I assume this is similar. Is that right, Bob?
Almost a mirror image, only this one is for the wastewater plant. So um I'll answer uh trustee Gator's question in advance relative to cutting the budget. It's our thought that we are not likely to go over budget in aggregate within this capital improvement program for either of these funds. Um, when we enter into budget preparation in in June-ish, uh, we will look at this specifically. And if we need to trim some things to get to a balanced overall CIP budget by the end of the year, then we'll, we'll certainly take those steps at that time. Uh, or come with a budget amendment. If there's just no way to find that money, we would come back to the board with a budget amendment at that time where we would have a very similar conversation, I'm guessing.
And I appreciate, thank you very much, Mr. Gowing. And I I would just ask, and I'm glad to hear you think you guys can stay under the budget, but I'll just tell you because we're looking at, again, potentially seeing a raise in sewer rates, we don't know yet, but potentially happening. Um, again, I I'm not going to feel comfortable with approving something that we're going to go this far over budget if we think we're going to have to come back to the board in June or July to get a budget amendment. If there's something else that's more important that needs to be done, then that needs to be done. Or we have to find a cheaper alternative. If this is truly more important than those other things, then we need to be willing to say we're going to hold on those. Because I want to make sure that we're not going out and putting more of the burden on our citizens.
I, I don't, I hope this would relieve some of your concerns to point out that these are expenses that we're simply taking out of the expansion project and putting in this project. So um, all of those fees are, are the, the potential fee increase for the wastewater fund in particular is based on debt service for that expansion moving forward for the next twenty years. So um, I can say with quite a bit of confidence that in the long run, neither of these projects are going to have an impact on the budgets and certainly not the rates uh in the future.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? Let's open up the public.
If Christine Gator, if you can state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Eighty one thirty two Fourth Street, Christine Gator. Um, I'm not quite sure I heard Mr. Gowing correctly, but he was saying that this is part of our debt and debt always affects um the citizens through um the sewer rate, which is a tax actually to the citizens and the residents. I'm not quite sure if I misheard you. Um, but fifty thousand over budget is huge. And um I'm not okay with the town spending my money and going over budget and being, I would like the town to be financially responsible. Thank you.
Yep, Melissa Whitehouse, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Melissa Whitehouse, thirty nine twenty two Grant. I've had um not personal experience, but the SCADA systems absolutely are, can be really ridiculously unreliable. I've heard it's some horror stories in the oil and gas field. They've been very simplistic in the past. And if we can't rely on our local utilities and the software and the hardware to support us from a homeland security standpoint and domestic terrorism, I think fifty thousand dollars, quite frankly, it's not a small price tag, but it's worthy um of the effort. And I really appreciate the fact that Bob Gowing and his crew have been very thorough, especially in in terms of reviewing the hardware aspects. I don't know um if there's a change in, let's say, nanotechnology uh in terms of the hardware, how that affects this particular contract. And this is being said from my computer geek days uh when I worked for insurance companies as a computer geek straight out of college. But if there's a superior um change in hardware within the next fifteen to twenty years, I believe these contracts cover that issue. And thank you very much, Mr. Gowing, for explaining uh to the point where hopefully I believe everybody understands the real situation in terms of this upgrade. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to obtain a motion to approve the water treatment plant SCADA equipment upgrade for that project?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve action item five of wastewater treatment plant supervisory control data acquisition upgrade bid approval.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Thank you all. Okay, we're done with action items, I think. Moving on to reports, town attorney, anything much tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, good. Town administrator?
No report, thank you.
Just going to fall up on that Easter egg hunt, right?
I admit, that's my swerve. That's going to be my swerve tonight.
Okay, uh, anything from staff? I I I, this you know, Mike, do you have anything you need to talk about tonight? Anything really? Okay, um we need to talk about bills or anything like that tonight? Not really? No? Okay. Board reports, any trustees want to bring up anything that they need to that's not related to any of this right now?
Um, Ms. Garcia and I will be in touch with the board in the near future to have um conversations about um where, where some water projects.
Good, good. We're looking forward to that. We need to be updated. A lot of us have been anxiously waiting for some good news. Anyone else?
Uh, trustee Whitehouse?
I I just, this is this trustee Whitehouse, I just want to circle back to something that we spoke about earlier. I I didn't get a chance to chime in. I mean, one of the things everyone has to realize in the audience and here, and we all know this, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town. And there was some comment that we were just pursuing county and state and federal funding. Well, that is financially prudent and that is exercising our fiduciary responsibility to our citizens to use our resources and make sure that we're nurturing those because that, that does have an impact on the bottom line. So there is we always have to be cognizant in those decisions. And sometimes it causes us to make decisions which have, are unpopular or maybe not necessarily fully understood. So that's really the only comment I had to make.
Okay, trustee Gator?
Yeah, I apologize. I had gotten bumped back and forth when we had gone over the, I had a couple of questions for Sergeant Reardon in regards to the um report from service and for February. And there were just a couple of items that had gone up significantly. I know one of the things that was called up was the vehicle trespassing. Um, and I wanted to see what the sheriff's department was doing to work on that. I know we also had seen a fairly significant rise again in harassment. And then we had also seen some issues with sex assault as well. Those are all concerning for me to see those coming up. So I didn't know if Sergeant Reardon could speak to kind of what we're working towards or what we're working on with any of those. If he's on tonight, I don't know if he is.
Uh, trustee Gator, uh, vehicle trespasses, those, those are cyclical. Um, when we get them, you'll see big numbers like that uh because it's usually somebody going through a neighborhood and accessing, you know, lots of vehicles uh in, in one night. So uh last, last month, we did have a couple of different nights where, you know, some uh person or persons went through several vehicles. Um, for instance, this month so far, um, hopefully this is wood here, and that we've had zero. So um that, you know, we, we, you know, patrol those areas where we're seeing, you know, when we see spikes, we increase patrols in those areas, uh try and do some, some different things with uh um, you know, either foot patrols or uh, you know, when it's, when it's not snowing, you know, twenty inches of snow, we try to get out on bicycles and things like that that allow us to move around more undetected uh that the people going around trying door handles don't know that the police are driving down the road uh before they get there. That's, that's one instance. The um the, the one that got listed as sexual assault, that's kind of an incorrect label on that uh that'll be corrected in in future reports. That encompasses all sex offenses. So that includes things like um child pornography things or internet exploitation uh cases. Uh, it can be, it it can include things even as as simple as um teenagers or young people uh sharing uh sharing uh sexual photographs that they shouldn't be sharing uh with each other. So and please don't, don't read that to say that there's, you know, a huge number of, you know, what would be traditionally called, you know, like uh rape cases. And that uh that's not, not the case there. And you had one other area that
It was the harassment. We had seen us rise from three to seven from last year.
Right. Harassments are, you know, those are individual, individual crimes. Usually those are, you know, somebody um threatening someone else, somebody following someone else around. Um, you know, that they're usually, usually involve people that are known to each other, um, you know, creating, creating issues for each other. It can even involve uh striking someone. So uh a lot of, a lot of harassments, not all of the harassments, but a lot of them involve domestic situations. If that helps.
It does. Thank you very much, Sergeant Reardon.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anything else? Okay, we'll close the board reports. That's it for this evening's session. Appreciate everybody coming in here. We got an executive session coming up tonight, so I would ask everybody to vacate and those need to stick around. We'll get ready to let Brad take us into the second session.
We do need to make a motion.
If I might, if you'd be going into executive session for any, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get.
You'll be going into executive session for the purposes of conferences with an attorney for the town pursuant to CRS twenty four six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice related relative to pending suits involving the voter initiative matters. The executive section will not be recorded and an attorney client, an attorney certification will be provided as required by CRS twenty four six four oh two two D point five. That discussions in the executive session constitute privileged attorney client communications.
Trustee McDonald?
So moved.
Second, roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, we need about five minute break?
Yes, please. Thank you, mayor.
Attendees that are on the meeting, if you could please um room of yourselves.
Looking forward to getting you back over there in hot seat.